It's 7:49, we'll open the meeting back up after closed session. And we move to item nine, reports and board comments. Item A, the list of board commissions and appointments as needed. We do have an opening on the Planning Commission. We will be taking care of the nomination and affirming of that in our next meeting, which is I believe November 26th, I believe, correct? So we still do have some open time for people to apply for that position.
Twenty-seventh.
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 Is that the day before Thanksgiving?
It really is.
And we're seriously doing that before Thanksgiving?
No, you were right, it's the 26th.
It's the 26th.
That's what I thought, yeah. I was gonna say, if we're worried about deer hunting season, why would we be worried about Thanksgiving? Okay, so it'll be the 26th, the Tuesday. So if you are interested or know somebody that's interested in the Planning Commission, please have them go into the front counter. You can fill out the form and sign it and have it right there, very quick. I believe we do have a filling of the void left by Mr. Milkie, which would be Ryan Buckley. Took your slot as representative from the PC and the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think that'd be, Ryan will be awesome in that role, too. He's a very fact-driven guy. I think that's a great position. We do have some openings coming up in February of next year. It looks like we have one, one, two, three. So people that are interested in Planning Commission, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity. Zoning Board of Appeals, we've got one, two, three, four positions. One alternate position and three expiring appointments. So we'll have some openings on Zoning Board of Appeals also. Make sure you sign up for that if interested. Board of Review, same thing. We have some expiration dates on 12/31/2020 next year. So be good there for a year. So let's see, we have the Construction Board of Appeals, yep.
All three.
Yep. And we'll make sure we gotta contact Colin, Rich Jukaviac, and Amy Tyson to see if they're still interested, but also we will take, what do I wanna say?
New applications.
Applications for them. Let's see, we've got Hannah's Bark Park expiring on 12/31. And the Chippewa River District Library, Ruth Helwig. I don't know if, has Ruth given us an application? So let's try to do that next week, or next meeting also, if we can, Jennifer. Let's see here, any of the other ones that we have that are pressing?
Cultural and recreational commission, Brian Smith, it's also 12/31.
Ah, okay. All right. Yep. So we got all kinds of, so if people wanna get involved in the township, this is a great way to do it. Moving beyond that, we go to board member reports.
Question, if I may, supervisor.
Yes.
On what we were just going over, board's expiration dates. Comment and a question. I believe it's accurate that all board members have the ability to make nominations to members, to folks, to these boards, with the exception of the Planning Commission, which would be reserved for the supervisor to make those nominations.
I think it's a ZBA, too? I think it's ZBA and Planning Commission, or is it just Planning Commission?
My understanding is-
Just Planning Commission?
Just Planning Commission, yes.
I thought it was just commissions, period, right? I think the statute says just planning commission, yeah.
And so that's my comment. Then my question, under the EDA board members, Ben, I was just curious, you're listed as number five, member of the EDA board members.
Mm-hmm.
Is that as a representative of the board, or is that as a-
That's a representative of the board, yes.
Okay. So we might just make that indication on this chart. We're in all the other commissions or committees, it is noted that who the representative of the board is, for clarification, that'd be suggested that we could do that.
Mark, have we gotten many applications? I know you've been putting this out on the web page for looking for people. Have we gotten many applications at all coming in?
We have an application, one application for the Planning Commission. We have Ms. Helwig's application for re, to re-up on the library board. That might be it right now. And Jennifer, if you know, just go ahead and speak.
We have the Bark Park, and we have two of the three, Construction Board of Appeals, with the third one interested in filling out an application as well, with the Construction Board of Appeals. We do have a couple of Zoning Board of Appeals applicants to re-up.
I got a question on the board. Is there any feeling of obligation for a member who has been on the previous board filling out an application, that they would have priority, per se, over someone filling out an application for that position for the first time? Would an incumbent automatically, for any reason that you can think of, be put in, or would there have to be scrutiny and evaluation and consideration on, you know? If, generally if you're a citizen, you are able to be on the board, so is there any real life experience, things that can be non-subjective that give someone a heads-up, or?
I was under the impression that with each new renewal, we're looking at whatever applicants as a pool are applying for that particular position. And then from that, you know, it might be the incumbent, or it might be a new person coming on, but that would be in terms of how we end up, you know, deciding as a board. But I've always thought that it was each time it opens up that position for any applicant applying for it.
We did have a Planning Commission-
Correct.
You know, where somebody wanted to re-up and they didn't get re-upped.
Right, right.
That's my understanding, too.
Thank you.
Anything else on board appointments? Okay, so let's go to board member reports. Let's see, might as well get the long one out of the way. Tim, you wanna go?
Oh, wow, you threw me.
I wasn't sure who he was talking about.
So I did have an opportunity, since we've met last, to attend two meetings. Clerk Cody asked me to attend the City of Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting on October 28th. Really enjoyed my time at that meeting. They started out with a presentation from their utility department billing and cashier supervisor, and she just gave the board a rundown of what goes on in their department to give them some insight and awareness about that department. So that's really pretty neat to see. There was some real interesting conversation about a possible, the way I understood it, maybe a recommendation from the state, that maybe not even a recommendation from the state, maybe more of a recommendation from a consulting engineering firm that the city utilizes to actually take a look into a contaminated area that years ago was fully capped, top to bottom, in clay, but to consider breaching that encampment and drilling in and seeing what's going on inside, on a recommendation of a consultant. And there was conversation both ways, some suggesting that, you know, we could not breach that and disrupt it, but do some monitoring out in the river where they were maybe worried where there could be some seepage. But, so with considerable consideration and discussion, that was postponed until they got a little further information. They also appropriated putting an additional contribution of $240,000 into the MERS retirement fund as kind of a stay ahead of the game measure, I guess. They indicated leaf pickup was starting, and probably not a moment too soon. And that was, in essence, just to that meeting. On November 5th, I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting. Highlights there included, they passed a grant agreement acceptance. It'd be a repeat that's been going on for a number of years, for a relatively small grant, but important, grant of $2,125. That would go for the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, for the 2020 Arts From Our Parks program. They do things out at Deerfield Park, and so it's important money to keep that program going. Also, a motion was passed to accept a grant for the Great Lakes Bay Regional Census Hub, and the money for that is to make an effort to reach out to folks that are a little more difficult to make contact with, because the census and counting every person possible is very important for our state, as well as possibly the township. There's also a service agreement provided for the Region 7 area agency, Agency on Aging to, that program is essentially to try to help keep folks in their home as long as possible before they may need to transition to assisted living of sorts. And there was also a, an approval of a contract agreement in the amount of, as I understood it, $216,000 of the Commission on Aging's 900,000-plus-dollar budget. So they committed to a 25% or so amount there. And on a lighter note, they made a contract with a gal to continue charity yoga services at the Commission on Aging. And that concludes.
All right. Let's see, you don't have anything. Bill?
I went to a road commission meeting on the 24th of October. They approved two new roads down on M-20 between Van De Car and Nottawa Road. There's the subdivision on the north-hand side, I think it's called the Pine subdivision. They renamed two streets. They were never named, so they had to name those. They sent certificates of appreciation to two former employees that retired. Doug Blizzard had 21 years, seven months. Pete Ash had 18 years, nine months. They got their, they had a check that was, that they were anticipating getting from Apex, the wind energy pro, or the wind energy farm. They wound up getting that check. They were wondering, you know, it was like right to the deadline, but they wound up paying it so they could start their project. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but they started building roads and stuff back home. I mean, I noticed by my house today where there's a new road. They got their winter equipment ready. This was, like I said, October 24th. They were getting winter equipment ready, which looks like they did that just in time. The new sign shop has been moved, so they're gonna be tearing the old one down for replacement of the new building that they're gonna be building. And they're supposed to meet with their architect on the 28th of October to start getting building plans together. I'm not sure if this came to the Planning Commission yet, has it? I don't know if it has or not. They're supposed to be getting stuck around for that. Then they hired a new employee, and they're looking to hire two or three more.
Any questions for Bill? Bill, they give you an indication at all of when the Lincoln Road project is gonna start? I heard February.
Well, they never mentioned it.
Maybe if you have a chance, you're interested in that one, too, I'm thinking. Make your trip to work a little longer.
A lot longer.
Yeah. Sidewalk Committee?
Yes. So Sidewalk and Pathways Prioritization Committee, we did not meet due to, we're hoping to go over an updated sidewalk map and that to look at where we currently have all sidewalks and that kind of thing, and where to go from there. So our next meeting is December 2nd, and so we're gonna have that one. And then taxes are underway and going to be in mailboxes, so that you get them in December, first week of December.
I seem to remember Peter already having something like that put together, like a year ago.
An updated one.
Updated one, okay.
With all of the new sidewalks that have already been done on it, so that we can go over everything and, you know, say, hey, look at what's been accomplished and look where we go from here, so.
Very good. Lisa?
At the November 11th city meeting, they did a proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of Central Michigan Life. The item that they postponed, they ended up passing that with Environmental Consulting Services.
So they're gonna be boring in, then? Or are they gonna-
They're drilling four wells to test the land. They held a public hearing on, and new ordinance for the recreational marijuana establishments, which, after approving that, they opted in fully. And then they'll be accepting applications January 6th for those.
And I guess I could ask this question with Tim, too, but the site we're talking about, is that the old landfill off Pickard on the north side? No.
Yes. There's one, hold on. And then they accepted, or approved, a grant for the game time sole source purchase of the playground equipment, which is kind of pending on our approval. Or they approved their portion, it's kinda, and it's in a new business under A, you're right to pack it, to get the new playground equipment. Kind of like a half and half.
Questions from Lisa, though? No? Mark?
Saginaw Chip Indian Tribe. So next Thursday, November 21st, they'll be making their 2% distributions for the fall. We have two projects in there, and hopefully we get funded for those. And should we be funded, Ben and I will be going there to accept the grant. Also, I wanted to read something that had been in the Morning Sun, this actually goes back to mid-October. But the tribe was, led the state this year, rather, in 2018, in terms of their gaming cash payouts. So there's, I think there's 12 tribes in Michigan, and Saginaw Chipor tribe handed out the most money of all the tribes. And between Mount Pleasant and Standish, they gave out $6.3 million. It was the first time that they got to that level. Just wanna read a few things here. In addition, Mount Pleasant, which was a recipient of 1.4 million of the distribution in 2018, was the fourth-largest beneficiary in the state. Most of that went to the school systems, by the way. And just to show in terms of what they have to spur, from 2013 to 2017, so 6 million was, the first thing that hit, 6 million, which was this year, which was in 2018. From 2013 to 2017, they had payouts between 5.4 and 5.8 million. So it's a significant amount of money that the tribe is, you know, contributing to our communities, and I think we've all been recipients of that, and very luckily so. And later this evening, on our new business on E, I'll be again talking about some of the potential projects for next spring, and that we'd probably wanna start earlier, because some of these projects might require, you know, us to get feasibility studies, engineering, costs, et cetera. So we can go over that later in the meeting. So that's it.
All right. So golly, I have one that goes back ways, was our EDA. Our last meeting, as we did approve the funding for-
I had a question for-
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, okay.
So the 2% request that the township put in for this fall, could you briefly just describe those to me?
Yeah, the two were for the defibrillators that we had purchased, both for the baseball fields and as for, for our offices here. So that's one. And the other one was for the four hydrants on Pickert that were being put in as well. So both of those projects had been done, but because we had, so the period before this fall, so last spring, we had gotten money for the baseball fields, because they wanted to have the update in terms of the junior, the major league or little league tournament. So the defibrillators was part of that package, but we ended up paying it, but we're, they feel that that's, that was an exchange in terms of what we had been paying for. So we have the defibrillators and four hydrants that we applied for this time, you know? But I think what I'm trying to do this, this time round for the spring, is that we have more notice, then we can actually go for bigger projects, similar to what we did with the Isabella Road, for example, and making some of those corrections. So the sooner the better in terms of knowing what we wanna do. And maybe tonight, we might even come to a consensus on some of those, those projects.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome. Let's see, EDA, we approved the funding to make the necessary improvements to Jameson Park that, to get the building up to code, also to improve the egress into, ingress and egress into that building, because it's kind of a funky curve, and so more of a straightaway and increase some of the parking. That's obviously a polling place. So that was the big thing that we did. I can't remember the exact total, 54,000, 64,000, I can't remember the number.
Hundred and nine?
No, this was, this was just strictly, I don't think we, we went to the full hundred and nine, I think it was-
Hundred and six.
Was it 106, was what we'd done? Okay.
The part of your EDAs approved FY '20 budget-
Yeah, okay.
And is also being recommended for approval to this body.
Yeah, okay. It goes into next year, then.
Ben, just a question. Are we not up to some code that is going to limit usage of it at this point in time?
It just that there was like, the GFI outlets around the sinks and things like that needed to be updated, I believe. The plumbing in one of the bathrooms needed to be updated. I think there was, it was mainly, I think about 15,000 of it was, was to get the building up to, up to code.
Up to current code.
Yeah. And then-
Eighty-seven hundred.
What's that, eighty-seven, eighty-seven hundred? And then the remainder of it was to improve the parking, increase the parking spots was, and then we also had talked about some kind of a signage off of Pickert, which I believe happened. I think M.D. actually put down a sign on Pickert Street showing that Jameson Park is down that street. So, yeah, that was kind of the gist of it. And, but it's, you know, this next thing coming up that we're gonna talk about here in a little bit, the playground structure, I mean, it's all part of revitalizing that park, right? Because that's been kind of the forgotten soul here, I think, the last 10, 15 years. So that's good that we're putting some money into that facility. The other thing that we had was, we did have our first study committee for the Recreation Authority. We didn't really have a chance to get a lot accomplished, except laying down some of the groundwork. We did appoint a chairperson, which would be Mr. Stuldryer here. And then, you know, we kind of left it where we're, you know, looking at, you know, who to hire for legal, to get the bylaws put together and kind of start the whole process up. So I'll have more probably to say about that, you know, probably after the January, the December and January meetings, where we actually start getting into the nitty-gritty a little bit.
Could I turn off?
Yeah, yeah, we had two representatives from the school system, two representatives from the city, two from the township, and then Ms. Diaz, who's the, kind of headed up that whole Citizens Committee, and was kind of been their representative. So, yeah, it was a, it was a very good, productive meeting. I think it's gonna be, you know, exciting. All right, so moving on from item nine, we move to item 10.
Nine. Oh, 10, yeah, you're right.
Which is the consent agenda. We'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the addition that, was that?
Oh, we already did that.
Okay. So that we approve the consent agenda as stated. And I had an opportunity to review the counts payable.
Everything good?
Yeah.
All right. So with that, let's see here, we're missing one member, but I think we can still vote on it all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Say aye? Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda approved. We move on to item 11, new business. First item is item A. This is gonna be, consider approving the purchase of one playground structure in collaboration with the City of Mount Pleasant for Jameson Park.
Make a motion that the Township Board of Trustees approve the purchase of one playground structure in the amount not to exceed $32,000 in collaboration with the City of Mount Pleasant for Jameson Park.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
It's just awesome. Right, makes sense. Fell in our lap, and it's, I'm very grateful for the city to, to think of us in this.
It'd be quite an addition out there. It's nice to see these joint collaborative projects being done, and also to see that neck of the woods getting some service. I mean, Jameson's Park is gonna be really upgraded over the next year or two, and I think that's gonna be nice for the residents over there. And, I mean, the value of the, the equipment, if you read, for, there was $119,000, and we're getting it for $32,000. I mean, it's quite a discount. And so again, doing these types of projects with other municipalities, I think, makes a heck of a lot of sense, you know, so, yeah, I like it.
All right, further discussion? All right. With this point, we take it up to vote. All in favor of approving the purchase of one playground structure in collaboration with the City of Mount Pleasant for Jameson Park, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to item B. Approve to schedule the FY 2020 budget adoption, public hearing for Tuesday, November 26th of 2019, and to notice the same in the Morning Sun as required by statute.
And make a motion to approve scheduling the fiscal year 2020 budget adoption, public hearing for Tuesday, November 26th, 2019, and to notice the same in the Morning Sun as required by statute.
Support.
Motion support, discussion?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. All right. Put this up to vote. Put this up to vote. All in favor of approving to schedule the FY twenty twenty budget adoption public hearing for Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, and to notice same in the Morning Sun as required by statute, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving to item C. This is consider approval of proposed Board of Trustees meeting schedule for the twenty twenty calendar year in accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed meeting schedule for twenty twenty calendar year in accordance to the Open Meetings Act.
Second?
Sure.
Okay, motion second, discussion.
I have one question. Is this just the Board of Trustees' schedule? Are we also approving the calendar for the other boards that, because I know...
Just the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Just because I was looking at this as a whole, and I assume they're adopting their own schedules and... Sorry, Bill?
No, I wondered that, too. So Thanksgiving must be on the twenty-fifth of November next year.
Yeah.
Or no, the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Because we're doing it Tuesday night, okay.
Yeah, I'm happy. This is the, this is the first time in three years that we haven't had a Board of Trustees' meeting on my anniversary. So my wife is going to be very happy tomorrow. We're going to be able to go to dinner. All right.
Both ones?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Classification compensation study elected officials and boards and commissions per diem. Do you bring your classification compensation study?
I want it back up.
We got a electronic copy of that or not?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that wasn't on the agenda part.
You two?
Yeah. I was going to say you should have it.
White hunches going to take me, well, look it up, I think.
Here, I got an extra.
You have an extra?
Who did I?
I don't have one.
I do.
Oh, I'll use yours, okay. It's mine. It was on seven twenty-four.
I did last night.
If that helps. I was forgetting something.
Probably will want to be anyways, right here.
Oh, I said it's on seven twenty-four.
Yep, I could have looked it up.
E two? Yeah, has that... Last page.
The data that you're wanting to focus on is appendix E is an Edward two.
No, it says E two. I mean, one, I'm trying to E two here. See, one's a lot of pages. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. All right.
Sure. Can I jump in here, Ben?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I looked at us first, and one of the things I did was I took the, there was one township that had health as a compensation, which be, could be considered a pretty expensive benefit for a board like ours. And so I just threw them out of the mix because I was kind of thinking they was actually skew things a little bit, right? I didn't think they compared the same way the other, I don't know, eleven or twelve townships do. And I, I've kind of felt this way, and don't take this personally, Ben. I've felt this way since when I was a trustee on this board before. With policy governance, the roles of the supervisor are not a managerial type role. And that was the one that was most skewed. It was at a hundred and eighty-three percent of the average of those other townships is our current pay. So I want, I thought we should look at that. Lisa was probably the closest at, with Clerk at a hundred and eleven percent. But I've always felt, even back then, I, I tried to get the previous board that I was on to consider looking at lowering the supervisor's pay, because supervisor is essentially a trustee with a few extra responsibilities and potentially one that we talked about earlier tonight as well.
All right. We're also talking for this, we're talking about eleven twenty twenty in terms of...
Yeah, I wouldn't...
In terms of a change in, in salary for supervisor, anyone else at that point we're talking.
Right. Our current supervisor signed up with current terms, and I wouldn't want to do that.
Doesn't affect anyone, doesn't affect anyone now, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Well, I, I agree with what you're saying, Brian. You know, I think that the, when we look at the wage study here, but when we look at our policy governance and what the manager's responsibilities are, both in terms of his job description as well as his employment contract, many of the responsibilities that previously were bestowed upon the supervisor prior to two thousand and ten really have gone over to the manager because of, we're now in a managerial form of government. So in, in that respect, there's been a significant decrease in terms of the job responsibilities or job requirements for the supervisor, you know, and so I think that that's the consideration that you're, you're talking about. I do agree with that, that that one did jump out in the study as well, the road study.
The other one I was hoping to see but did not see was planning commission, because I know our planning commissioners put a lot of work in.
We discussed that before.
And I heard you had. And what I learned, at least through the wage studies, that we're not out of a line, which surprised me a little bit, because I know our planning commissioners, there's a lot of preparation work that goes into those meetings, and some of those meetings are pretty long, and, but I'm a little biased, too, coming from the planning commission.
But you do know it's a heck of a lot of work.
I do.
You haven't been on the, on the planning commission myself, Lisa. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of work that goes with that, and I know that's within line of what the other municipalities have, you know, in terms of the average, but there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into that, into that job, into that position, you know.
I've always been on the contention of, you know, and I'm spending three years, you know, trying to get people to, you know, to, to up for, for the commitment. I've always felt that if you, if you, there has to be a justification, and you get a lot of people that have, you know, young kids at home, and so what we're asking them to do is take time away from their family, whether it's studying, right, preparing for a meeting, you know, going to a site, but the meeting that evening, but not just the planning commission, because, you know, look what we've got going on right now. We've got, you know, the, the new ordinance meetings, and, and then we had the master plan where there was a lot of extra time involved. And, you know, we brought this up before, and I, and there was some support, but eventually not enough, was to look at, at that and say, you know, to me, it's always been like, if I can't be with my family that evening, then, you know, what we should be offering them is, is, you know what, we're taking you away from your family and, and your kids, which for some people is probably maybe like a, you know, yay. But for a lot of people, in the grand scheme of things, you're missing time. And I've always felt that the compensation for be, should be, you know what, you know, what's a, what's a dinner and a movie cost? Right? I mean, something simple as that is, and we know how much movies are nowadays and dinner, but, you know, I think that when we're talking some of these meetings, you know, we should be pushing probably closer to, you know, I think, you know, if we're trying to keep it under a hundred dollars, I think ninety-five. And I think for maybe some of these special meetings where they're going in and doing master plan work and, and zoning ordinances, then, you know, maybe you don't have that as much of compensation, but maybe for a special meeting, you know, you do fifty or something like that. But I do believe that, that for the amount of work that they do, and, and they put themselves out there. I mean, you know, that's the one committee that we have where if there's like, you know, torches and pitchforks, it's that board, right? And I think that they put themselves out there, and it make, I think the life of, of the supervisor a lot easier is you could talk to some of these younger people, right? And I, that have families and say, well, you know, there, there's some compensation involved here, too. And, and maybe that's something that they say, you know, gosh, if I save that money up, I've got, we get a nice vacation at the end of the year. So that's where I'm at with it.
I have no qualms in regards to the planning commission as, as far as the suggestion that, you know, we're in the ballpark where we're at, but understanding everything you guys just said, I would have one little caveat that maybe that chair should get to that hundred dollar, you know, that the chair of the committee goes even a little further, has considerably more responsibility.
So we have two issues going on here. One is talking about the supervisor.
I'm sorry, I brought up both the things that I was looking at when I was doing this.
So it's kind of confabulating it, but there's two different things. One would be the, looking at supervisors' pay, and then we're also looking at planning commission per diems, so to separate in that regard.
Pick one and work on that?
Yeah, maybe do one at a time.
All right.
Yeah.
Pick your battle, which one do you want with first?
Either one, I mean, where you want to start.
We talked about the planning commission one and up, let's vote on that.
Do understand it is our largest board. It's a nine-member board.
Yeah, they're the heavy lifters in the township.
Yeah, understand that.
What did we talk about last time? Wasn't it ninety dollars we talked about last time?
I think so.
Something like that. Last year, whatever, we talked about it.
So we're currently at sixty-five?
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at, so Grand Rapids Charter Township pays one fifty per meeting, Teterwasi Township pays one hundred, ninety-five by Byron Charter Township, some are lower. Another one, Grand Haven, seventy-three to eighty-four. So we're, we're not being out of line here in terms of looking towards, you know, maybe increasing that for the folks. It's, it is a lot of work. It's also, in, in many ways, it's an ungrateful position because you get a lot of heat. There's, you know, no matter what decision you make, there's always folks that are going to be opposed to it, and I think folks out in the committee don't realize the amount of time and work. You go to the site, sites to review it, you go through papers, site plan reviews, you know, it's a tremendous amount of work. And you try to make the best decision that you can do with, with the due diligence that you have available to you. And my sense is, is that that's a tough position, planning commission. I think it's one of the hard, I think it's probably one, other than this, I think it's the hardest, you know...
It is.
...board, or in this case, the commission to be on, you know.
I would throw out a suggestion, if you guys want to talk numbers or anything, there's really no other real benefit monetarily. I think there is a little bit in FICA, maybe, and some of those things in the wages, but I would throw out considering a ninety dollar per diem, per person for attending the full meeting, and a hun, a hundred dollar for the chairman of the board at the meeting.
I'll support that.
Tim, how would you feel about amending that and looking at the special meetings? And with those, they're more, they're not the same level, right, with, but still compensating for...
So I didn't really make a motion. I just threw out a suggestion to talk about.
Okay. I, I had the same thoughts that, and you're right, that those special meetings typically aren't publicly well-attended, it's not as much heat. You're definitely doing your homework to prepare for those, but...
Yeah. A little different level, right?
Right.
So I was thinking hundred for the chair, ninety for the regular member, and fifty for special.
Cross the board on the special?
That's less than they get now.
Yeah. They get sixty-five to seventy now.
They get paid on all meetings.
They get all the meetings.
Okay, they get all the meetings, they're getting sixty-five?
Yeah.
I was on the planning commission, I didn't know that.
Well, you did. Yeah. You got the special.
I didn't know.
You don't really pay attention.
You're trying to sneak a clawback in your work.
Do you get it for...
Yeah, I didn't think we did.
You don't get it for special meetings, did you? I thought it was just for regularly scheduled meetings.
Doug?
I haven't, we were talking about I have.
I guess, no. Sorry. We can't ask the crowd, sir?
They gave you a say for the special meetings?
They get it for all of them.
That's the policy, yeah.
Okay, so we'd be looking at nine, a hundred and ninety and sixty-five.
Does the planning commission get paid for the special meetings also?
And seventy for the chair in the case of the special?
Chair on a special meeting, I don't think is a big deal.
I don't either.
That's, that's just sitting there, so...
I would agree. Okay. I'm, I'm supportive of that.
So what, where the...
So basically, we're, we're just paying them an extra twenty-five dollars a person, so eight times twenty-five dollars is what, a hundred and seventy bucks, right?
Per month, essentially.
Yeah. And then you've got the extra for the chair, which would be another thirty-five. So you're like two hundred and ten dollars more per month, I think. Does, does that sound right to you?
If ninety and a hundred, I had two hundred and seventy.
Two seventy, okay.
A meeting, and I threw out fifteen meetings because there's twelve normal, and like to say, call it three special, and add FICA in there, and you're a little, you're probably around forty-five hundred bucks for the year.
That's not so bad.
Addition of what you're paying now.
Yeah.
What'd you say for the special, Ben? Keep it at sixty-five, or did you change it?
I said keep it at sixty-five. If that's what they're getting now, is sixty-five bucks for a special meeting, then, you know, we should probably keep it at sixty-five. I don't want them going on strike on us or something like that because they're not getting sixty-five.
I don't think any of them do it for the pay, to be honest.
But it's a nice perk.
Yeah. It is. It was always a nice surprise when, because I never counted on it.
Yeah.
We do have in our anticipated budget, you know, a different amount, so, and that is a draft, so just have to be aware that will be a changing number if this goes through.
So what, what's on the floor then in terms of what are the numbers? Ninety per meeting and one hundred for the chair? And then what are you saying for, and so it's, it's just entered, extra meetings?
Keep it the same.
Everything stays the same? Okay, so ninety and a hundred is what people are throwing out here?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and put the motion on the floor because I don't think we have one. So I'll go ahead and put a motion on the floor then that for planning commission for regular meetings, we increase the regular planning commissioner pay to ninety, ninety dollars per regular meeting, a hundred dollars for the chair, and we keep special meetings at the current rate, which is sixty-five and seventy respectively.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yes.
You talked about the regular and the special. Are the regular meetings going to be the ones that are defined in the, the meetings that they, the meeting schedule that they adopt for the year? And anything outside of that will be defined as a... And anything outside of that will be defined as a special meeting?
You don't really have too many other plan review meetings, site review meetings that are, that are being above, do we?
You can have someone pay special, they can pay for it.
Then I, I think that that would have to be part of the discussion too, right? I mean, when we're talking about being out there and having, if somebody's paying for a special meeting, then it's going to be well-attended, I'm thinking.
I bring it up because right now you have a single fee schedule. And so you're talking about now having a bifurcated schedule. And you're talking about one level for a regular meeting, one for a special. So now we got to get into defining those two things. And the planning commission adopts a meeting schedule at the beginning of each year, there's twelve of them. And I'm just asking if that's what you want to be called, the regular meeting. And then a special meeting is something, is a meeting that's called, that's, that's not part of their regular meeting schedule that they adopt at the beginning of the year.
Well, I started a motion, so let me ask the question since this isn't really a discussion yet, but what kind of headache does that present for the staff?
We're in, we're indifferent.
Okay.
I just want to know. So I know which meeting to pay the right amount for.
So how would we define that as far as like, uh, if, if say we have somebody that pays for a site, special meeting and there's a site review involved in that?
That to me would be a regular meeting.
That should be a regular meeting.
And now you're getting into. Yeah, you're getting into.
I was gonna say, you might want to just stick to one single rate pay if, if.
It's still up to the chair or the planning commission to call the meeting, whether or not somebody wants to pay for it or not.
Well, they're getting, they're getting the, the, the sixty-five dollars, which is they're making right now on special meetings. So the regularly scheduled meetings are getting a hundred and ninety. If we just keep it at that, how many can there possibly be?
Right.
I mean.
It's not a money thing for me, I just want to be able to find it.
Uh, let me clarify my motion then, if I may. And I'll just restate it in fact. So my motion was clarified to increase regular meetings defined as the adopted public schedule of the planning commission to ninety for regular members, commissioners, and one-hundred for, uh, the chair. And sixty-five for all planning commissioners, including the chair, for all special meetings, meaning not part of the annual calendar scheduled meetings. Does that clarify it for the staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Support.
I think I should recuse myself from voting on this. Me being on the planning commission, I don't want to give myself a raise, you know what I mean?
So we do have a motion. Do we have a second? Do you have a support on that?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion?
We already discussed.
Okay, all right. So wording correctly then, and this, you had said the, the adopted schedule, right? The adopted scheduled meetings.
Planning, planning commission's schedule.
Right, right, I know that. I just want to get the wording correct. Okay, so the motion would be then to, um, uh, the rate of pay is going to be based upon the regular approved schedule of the planning commission. Once you word your motion for.
Jennifer's probably already got it written down.
Do you have a read?
I've got it drafted that anything that's approved at the regular scheduled meeting that the planning commission approves is going to be the one-hundred and ninety. One-ninety for the regular, hundred for the chair. Anything added as a special meeting that's not on that calendar will be sixty-five for all.
All right.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. So, that being the motion, I'm not having to repeat it again. We will take that to vote. And this would be to increase the pay of the planning commission to one-hundred dollars for the chair, ninety for the regular members, sixty-five for special meetings, the hundred and ninety will be only for regularly scheduled, scheduled meetings on their adopted schedule. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, very good.
Yeah, Jennifer, would you let the record show that Cody recused yourself? Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we go to the next item, which was the township supervisor pay. Hard for me to talk about this one. I do think that whatever number is, is involved there, there, um, isn't, it's not as much, you always have to take into account, there's, there's, there's a lot from a citizen expectation level, and there's also a lot from a legal level. We've already experienced the legal level way back at the beginning. And, and that wasn't fun. And that was, there's a lot of pressure. So, you know, I'm gonna let you guys discuss the pay, because it's hard for me to discuss it. But I will say that there's, there's more involved than just the, the job description. There's a lot involved as far as the mental anguish, pressure, legal responsibilities. You've got the board review, uh, in there too, that you're not compensated for as part of the whole deal too. You know? So, again, I'm gonna leave, I'll chime in at some point, and I'll leave you guys talking about this one.
Well, I don't, I don't, I do see the supervisor, this is my view of, uh, policy governance to a certain degree. I see the supervisor very much like any other trustee, whether it be the clerk, treasurer, or a trustee. But there are obviously added duties that, uh, the three officers get. And that's stated to a certain degree in our policy governance, as an executive committee, what's it called? Management team? And, and not that those are large, um, obviously that the clerk has elections, et cetera, and all that goes with that office, and same with treasurer. So I don't, I don't view the fact that the, the supervisor doesn't have additional responsibilities above and beyond the four other trustees. I do, they're just not at the level that we saw back prior to two thousand and ten, um, with professional staff helping run the township.
I agree. And I think, um, in terms of the trustees, you know, certainly we also bear a lot of responsibility as well. I mean, the amount of time that goes in preparation for meetings, you know, each one of us is assigned to an entity outside of the, out of here, you know, in terms of the tribe or other, other commissions and boards. So it is, it is, uh, labor-intensive in that regard. I, I see it like you, that, that for the supervisor being that it's changed since two thousand and ten. And maybe that should have been done at the time, adjusting the salary when the responsibilities were changed back then. But I don't see those responsibilities of supervisor maybe a little bit more than a trustee. But not in terms of the, uh, being here at the township the way the, the treasurer and the clerk are. You know, they're, they're actually have jobs here, you know, and, and it's not the case of supervisor. So, um, you know, I, I do think that there should be an adjustment, you know, downward based on, because if you take a look at the numbers, you know, we, we are out of, out of line in terms of the, uh, you know, the average as well.
Just to remind of a little history, uh, about four years ago, this board, the previous board took a very bold step, I felt, by making a really prudent move that I think more elected officials should consider. As a board member, one of the seven here, we received a generous medical and health insurance package. We also rece- received a, uh, a small but noticeable, um, retirement package. And this board took the bold step saying, you know, that truly should not be paid to the members of the board. It was very well-welcome, but being fiduciarily responsible to the township. We made the decision and, uh, it passed by the folks receiving those benefits. So I give so much credit for that board when we did it. Also, on, at least my mind, I had that same discussion as far as the reduction in supervisors' duties at that time. My belief is the supervisor, probably in the community's mind, has a role a little bit different than what the township has, uh, has it at this point in time. They are the, uh, public voice typically of the board. But really, in my mind in essence, they run the meeting, they're in charge of running our, uh, bi-monthly meeting. But the responsibilities beyond that are similar as the four trustees. Unlike the treasurer and the su- clerk who do have some elevated responsibilities. So at that point in time, I, I really did want to make a motion to reduce the supervisor's salary. Did not because the other elimination of the, uh, healthcare benefits and the, uh, insurance or the retirement package was disruptive enough without really getting into, to that portion. And what we do here is for the next council or board.
Correct.
It is not for us. Any one of us could ask and have our salaries reduced, but the board cannot force that on anybody. That'd have to be a voluntary thing.
Legally.
So legally. So you could have it reduced by request, but the board cannot say, we're going to reduce your salary. So this impacts the next elected board.
Exactly.
And so it has been, it didn't take effect in two thousand and ten, uh, to reduce that, but it has been discussed four years ago, but then, uh, there was nowhere to go with it for the next four years, till this point in time. So it's an appropriate thing to talk about.
Incidentally, just, uh, I think it was a hundred and fifty-three or a hundred and fifty-six thousand annually that the township saved by that move that we did. I mean, it was a lot of money, the, the health, the retirement, et cetera.
So what do folks think would be reasonable in terms of, um, you know, for the next, um, for the next board coming on? You know, we made some adjustments here. You know, my sense is that it should be somewhere between the, um, treasurer and the clerk and, and somewhere between the trustees. Somewhere in that, in that, in that, in that realm. Because I agree with you, the responsibilities of the supervisor, you know, um, aren't excessively more than what we as, as trustees do. But I do think there should be an adjustment up in terms of what the requirements are and what they do do. But I think it, it certainly isn't at the same level what we see on the treasurer, the clerk, you know?
Back four years ago when, uh, we were talking about that, the thought was, uh, that was being talked about was the level of, uh, a salary of ten thousand dollars for a salary. I don't know that that is the right number today. I would, looking at our study, uh, there's some significant, uh, numbers that have to be considered from the study itself in a downward adjustment. You know, I, I would offer that I could, uh, go with a number of like twelve thousand five hundred dollars as a talking point.
I think that that's reasonable. I mean, that's, you know, that, that's an adjustment up from where we are. And, uh, and also it's indifferent than where, you know, where we are with the clerk and the, um, and the treasurer.
So just point of interest, I, I, to me at least, um, Union Charter Township, us, is the highest by quite a bit of any of the supervisors of the wage study that we did. The range is anywhere from essentially eighty-five hundred to twenty, almost twenty-five thousand. That's kind of that range of what other townships are paying for that position.
And the twelve-five is somewhere in that medium range of that, uh, the cohort group.
I would go from the, the wage study that I did, where I called all the charter townships that had similar population size, similar, everything, mileage. And the ones with manager, without, I had all of that done on wage study. But it's not in there. They did it on different places. But I mean, I can show you that if you want to get a more accurate thing for somebody with a manager.
This is what we have that was, were paid for this. I, yeah, I think that, uh, again, you know, as, as, as a policy governance has delegated increasingly more responsibility, you know, to the manager. And, uh, therefore, the, that's where the adjustment, you know, the adjustments are coming to play, you know, so.
So, so we're talking, that's five thousand dollars more than the trustee
Correct.
to handle how the citizens perceive and probably feel they can pick up the phone and communicate with that position. As well as, uh, chairing the board, which takes some preparation certainly. And Ben had mentioned the supervisor is also committed to, uh, being the ZBA.
Board review.
Board review.
So you've got, yeah, you've got those responsibilities.
So I think five thousand is certainly, uh, in my mind, a fair number for those added responsibilities. A generous number, actually.
I do too. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Of the supervisor? So do you, uh, you don't get paid for the board review like the other members do?
No.
I think that's because it happens during work hours.
Yeah.
Isn't that the stipulation?
No, because we have, we have some that are like on a, we have special meetings on Saturdays. So I mean, it's just one of those things that, that, that the per diem doesn't cover.
Yeah, and that, I would find that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you back. I was just gonna say, I would not find that fair to the supervisor in that case. Because, I mean, even as, as Lisa, as a liaison for planning commission, you get the per diem for the planning commission.
But my clerk meetings, I don't, or the, I mean, there's a lot of other meetings I have to attend to, but I don't.
And, and I believe it's written that, say, the, uh, board members get a certain value for a meeting they attend. I think you'd find in writing that if a board member is on one of those committees, they get the stipend of that committee, which could be totally different than what they're typically going to get at a board meeting. And I think you can find that verbiage in our language.
Typically, how many phone calls do you handle a week, a month, just say? And, okay, and of those phone calls, say if you field fifty phone calls a month, how many of those can just be handled by the staff?
Most emerges people complaining about something.
So typically, how many are there a month that you respond to?
The ones that I, that I get through my email, um, I respond to everyone that I get.
Well, how many is it? I mean, I know I get about five a month. So I don't know what the other trustees get.
It probably isn't, it really realistically isn't any more than that.
That's about what I get.
I mean, I get more people, to be frank.
Maybe sometimes more.
Walking into my front door than I do the phone calls.
Go to a grocery store.
Well, that's good for business. Anything to get them in the door, Ben.
Well, you know, I mean, that's, it's the truth. I, I get it probably more when I, when I go to the gym in the morning or I, or I, um, go to a restaurant or go to a, uh, you know, take my wife out to dinner or, or, you know, my, my, my business. You know, if somebody has a problem, then they'll always, they know where I'm at, so.
Right.
You know, that's where they go. Which is fine. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm cool with that because it's, you know, that's what you're, that's part of the deal.
Is there a motion here? Is there a motion here?
No.
What's that?
Somebody made a motion, no.
I mean, what, what do you think is reasonable for it? Because I think it, you know, it's, it's a step down. We want to make sure that we're doing it right. Said 5,000 above the trustee would be a reasonable, so you're saying 12,0500.
And I don't, I don't feel comfortable, I think, going below that. I mean, it's not, the supervisor is a trustee, but certainly has some additional responsibilities. I think what we're trying to do is figure out what's the value of that, right?
Why don't you cut it in half, go 15? Whoever's gonna try to do this, they're, they're the, I mean, trustees get a lot, but it's the mayor of the city. And I mean, when people gripe about what's going on with, with Mount Pleasant, if somebody gripes about it, I hear constantly is, unfortunately, the mayor's name comes up and the manager's name comes up. You know, you hear that more often than not, and you hear the same thing with the township. I think there's, you also have to look at it, do you want a quality person to want to expose themselves to that? I mean, that's, that's the big thing. Do you, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that I just assume not have to be dealing with because I think there's some, there's some value there too. But I just don't want you to make it so low that the next person, you want, you want quality people. You know, I mean, if you're taking and cutting it in half down to 15, that's a major drop, but it's still attractive enough that somebody's going to want to do it.
So the average between what the treasurer, clerk would make plus a super, plus a trustee, the average would be 14,250.
14,000. I think we're all in agreement.
That it needs to be reduced.
That it needs to go lower. It doesn't affect anything for the current supervisor. So we're not taking anything away. We're looking at moving forward. So for 11, you know, 2020, we're looking at, that would be the stated salary along with what did clerk, treasurer, trustees, as well as the, so what are people comfortable with?
Well, I'll tell you, I want to do a little negotiation for the next person in as if they're going to lower it, then the, there needs to be a per diem for the board review.
I would agree.
Well, then I would look at the 12.5 if there's a per diem for the, for the board review because that still gets in there too in terms of, you know, added expense. You both have talked about 5,000 above. I mean, is that, and they already thrown out the 14, the average. Let's take one thing, one step at a time. So what then is the, you know, what's the consensus on that?
I'll make a motion for 14,000 plus per diem for board review. What is currently the board review get?
125.
Uh, for the regular meetings, I think are 125.
Right, and so you have like maybe five or six of them. You have three, well, you have four, right? And then you have two or three special meetings.
July and, how many in December do we have, Pat?
One in December, one in July, and usually you have an organizational meeting and the three days of board review, so you've got six.
Six, right.
And they have to attend a seminar once a year.
A seminar is, is a training, be a training.
So 825 dollars, so.
900.
So if you just make it to 15, then 15 even and don't put the per diem in, it makes it simple and just keep everything the same.
I'm more inclined to go with the, with the 12.5 figure. I mean, you guys have talked about the 5,000, if I think that that's a fair price for what's being expected at this point in time for, for the supervisor relative to, you know, again, you know, the other positions. You've made a motion, right, so I don't want to.
I don't know if that's seconded.
I think per diem's important. I think per diem's important for any member that's attending other boards. I think it helps encourage them to get there, to make sure they're in attendance. There's also a thought, you know, we, we've kind of talked and have a ballpark idea, potentially. Should we vote on that before we even talk a little bit about other positions? You know, everything's, every position is here to be talked about.
Well, either way, to vote on it, we have to have a resolution made and we have to do a roll call vote on it for the next board. Every time you change the pay of a board member, like ours, you remember?
Okay, is that something that can be accomplished tonight? Make it a resolution and have a roll call vote?
To draw a resolution, who's gonna wait for that? We have it for the next one.
So you're saying, no, it's not due?
I mean, you can, I guess. I don't really have any forms or anything fill out or nothing, but I mean, we can just wait for the next one. If possible, just give me some amounts or something, and I'll write up a resolution for you.
Well, we can write in the amount even, right, at the times?
Yeah, we do that.
We can still.
I mean, you want me to do one for everybody? Don't matter to me.
So I'm just throwing out there, before we vote on the supervisor, should we have some discussion about the other positions? Because we're now, we're saying this is this percentage of this. But who knows? We might bring up trustees and end up putting ourselves at a higher value than the supervisor. So I did, I mean, that could happen. So I just think it warrants, we're talking about the other positions before we put something in stone for the supervisor. I just think that's proven.
It is.
So let's talk about the treasurer. The treasurer currently is at a 21,000?
190.
190? And I believe that's similar to the clerk.
They're the same.
It's the same. I mean, if you're gonna keep the clerks the same, I would bump the treasurer down or bump the clerks out because the job does not, they're not the same.
As we look at
So if you're going into the far years.
They're relatively at the, an appropriate level.
It's more in line with
With that wage study, yeah.
The one that, you know.
Supervisor was the one that jumped that. The others were more in line.
We were the highest of all the townships.
So I guess my point of view would be probably keep those two positions where they're at.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Which then leaves the lonely trustees, which are compensated at a rate of $7,500 annually for a base salary.
And we had bumped that up from the 4,000, whatever it was.
Because of that.
Because of the amount of, the volume of work that was, that was being, that we were doing. So that's where that came into play.
Well, I, I would recommend that the trustees remain at that same level.
And I can do that, but I, I always felt the four was plenty. It's never going to compensate you for the amount of time you spend.
Sure.
Just not gonna. Because there are weeks when it's a lot of hours, right? Just like I'm, I mean, you all put in a lot of hours that if you tallied it up, you're probably under minimum wage.
Well, we said that, yeah.
Right?
We proved that point.
But, but I always felt you also serve, you're serving your community, and so it's not always about the pay. But I certainly can support keeping that the same. But I, I probably wouldn't have raised it to the 7.5 or whatever it is at the time had I been on this board, but I wasn't.
So now we're back to the supervisor. So.
So I was the only dissent then. All right, so does that help you? Because.
Does that? So I would make a motion that our, the position of supervisor at the charter township of Union.
Okay, didn't I just say we had to do that resolution wise? Or we have to make a resolution to change it, the pay for the, for the.
So here will be my motion that can be translated into a resolution if it's passed by this board. So for effective, it'd be November 2020. November 11, 2020, the position of supervisor at the charter township of Union would receive a base salary of $12,500 plus compensation for the zoning board of appeals meetings attended at the rate of the
Board of Review.
Board of Review. At the board review rate of pay.
I would support that.
Discussion.
I don't feel comfortable voting on that though. I'm just saying, it has to be done in a resolution form, changing the pay. But we can tell manager to write it up and have.
We can have discussion in table for the formal resolution.
And have, yeah. I think we can do the business to say, this will be it, a resolution needs to be drafted. Basically indicating what was determined. I believe that could be legal. That's somewhat semitic, I don't know, might jump in.
I personally.
The practical implication is, you can vote, you can make a motion, you can vote, and that would give me direction to draft a resolution with those numbers. You're gonna vote again, so your vote could change, but yeah, you'll have a second vote. It's all legal.
So I suggest I have made a motion for voting on that. Could be a roll call vote if anyone chooses or a group vote.
Well, resolution ultimately would have to be roll, right?
The resolution would.
I know the rules on this one, I don't feel comfortable voting on it because I looked it up last time when we changed the trustees. And I know we have to have a resolution right now, roll call vote, blah, blah. Let's just postpone it to the next meeting.
Would you be willing to?
And it make me, or make your motion to direct the manager to draft a resolution.
And that's where I was gonna.
I don't have a vote on that.
Yes.
Amend it?
So my motion would be to direct the manager to draft a resolution mimicking the result of this motion and vote to put the supervisor's salary for the November 11, 2020 year at a base of $12,500, acknowledging that pay will be also compensated for board of review meetings attended.
And I supported that, so is, must have a discussion. You know, people think.
For discussion purposes, don't quote me on these amounts, but I've got a couple of friends that are supervisors. Isabella Township, I believe he told me he makes 10,000. And I would think that you'd be pressing to have 2,000 residents in Isabella Township. Nadawa Township, I believe that one's around 11,000. And I would think that you'd be pushing to have 2,000 residents in that township. Where in our township, we have 14, 15,000. I just don't, I, I don't know if I could support going that low.
The difference is that we have a managerial model here. So in those cases, it's the supervisor that actually has a lot more responsibility in those townships. Granted, it's a smaller township. But in a, I wouldn't feel this way if our township hadn't gone to that model back in 2010. That's why I've always thought we've shifted so much away from the board to the staff and put us in a more of a supervisory or oversight role.
But I would think that those townships have zero employees too. So just, I just throw that out there.
So there's a lot more responsibility on those particular supervisors, even though their townships are smaller because they don't have the support staff-wise and they don't have a manager, you know, who's taking on most of the load. So, you know, you also want to make it so that it's someone who, you know, you're not doing it for the bucks, but they do want to have some type of compensation for, you know, for, for the skin of the game that you're putting into this. So, you know, what were you thinking, Bill?
I, I would feel comfortable 14, 15,000. I know there was some discussion before, half of what they make now. I think you're gonna have a hard time finding somebody to run. I don't, you know, like, you make valid points, you know? You don't always do this for the pay. I mean, I'm definitely not doing it for the pay because.
You lose it out.
Right, I mean, you know, you, you spend a lot of time, no matter where you go. You're spending time talking about what we're doing right now, being in this building.
So if we were to up it, for me to be comfortable with going higher, then I would eliminate the per diem for the, you know, I would make it a straight, a straight shot. You know, it's 14 or 15, whatever it would be.
And I think supervisor, yeah, supervisor's already mentioned that.
I mean, as we're having this discussion, it's, you know, but we do have a motion on the floor, you know, with this, so.
Any other discussion on that motion?
Any more discussion on that?
I think it should be 14 or 15 too, or 14, 50, you know.
And I would agree, if, if that's where it went, I could be more supportive if there wasn't the per diem with it because you're basically building that in.
Okay, right, because it's being built into this model. I mean, it depends how you, how you do it. So is it a straight, you know, you may either make it a straight, straight shot, this is what it is, or you're doing the 12.5 plus the, the, the per diem.
I think the per diem's important to encourage the attendance at those other meetings that have been discussed. So it's the same amount of money.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Enough to assure that there's attendance, yeah.
On that point, if I may, it relates to the board review and the supervisor. By statute, the supervisor's secretary of the board of review. So attendance is not particularly optional, if you will. It's required by law.
And the supervisor should be compensated for that. Which, which you're, you're, you're pretty much right with the two proposals I've heard. What's the difference? Twenty, $2,000 total per diem for that at least covers nine of that, probably. So there is a little bit of a difference between the two, not much.
Exactly.
So manager stool dryer, if I'm hearing you correctly, if the supervisor for circumstances, whatever they may be, illness away, if they're not attending that meeting, that meeting would be canceled?
No, the board of review would name a super, secretary to handle that particular meeting.
But the expectation is that supervisor's there as.
I was only pointing it out because it was commented that it might be an encouragement to attend. I'm just wanting to put a finer point on that point.
Just to let you know, some of those meetings are eight hours long.
Yeah, those Saturdays and, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're only $65 and they're eight hours long?
Yeah, some of those, we have, one of those is.
No, it's 125.
Oh, I was gonna say, that's wild.
The March ones are really long. So we're, we're splitting hairs here.
I think so too.
Just make it fifteen, include the, the board of view in there and then it's attractive for whoever wants to to run. I think Bill's right, you go down too low, then you're gonna have a hard time, people wanting to expose themselves.
Well, you took the average in the, uh, between.
Fourteen, two fifty.
So fourteen. I just don't feel the position is worth twice the amount of a trustee. I think that is, for what the additional responsibilities, I guess, is irresponsible management of the funds when we don't have to go to that level.
That's, I was supporting when you two were talking about five thousand differential between trustee and the supervisor. That seemed to me to be fair and equitable, um, for the additional responsibilities that currently exist.
Let's call the question, how about that? Call the question.
We did have support on the amendment then?
Yes.
And that reads as.
You want a roll caller?
Twelve fifty base plus the per diem over the six meetings.
Twelve thousand five hundred or twelve fifty?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Plus.
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage is different here. We should do a roll call.
I'm standing from this one.
I don't know that you need to, um.
It's for future.
It may not.
It's for future. I don't feel comfortable voting on it for the next person.
That's not a reason to.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable either, but I'm voting, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, you don't directly, like unless you were to run and win, which is no guarantee.
Our main responsibility is fiduciary too.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
No, it's okay. I don't see you in conflict, is what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay.
Supervisor, Yanni.
God, that's terrible predicament, yes.
Treasure Rice?
Yes.
Trusty Hulk?
No.
Trusty Mikey? I tried, I tried. Milky.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, yes.
Trusty Lanning?
Yes.
Trusty Worley?
Yes.
Clerk Cody? God, that's a tough one. I'm gonna go with yes.
Wow.
Well, it's to just.
No, no, I'm just.
Do it, so I mean, I can vote differently if I want to.
Feeling alone a lot here, so.
All right, so we're done with that, right?
Yes.
Okay, um. So nine twenty-two, how much do we want to delve into this two percent for next year?
Well, he's just gonna sum it up real quick.
Uh, we could do it one or two ways, I mean, I could, I can either quickly review.
Well, we already went over them, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, but I don't know if you remember.
I remember them.
Guess we didn't.
You had an order too, go with the order you thought was important.
So with the, if we go on to a, we can decide if you want me to just quickly rehash the ten or so potential projects or, um, for me to just describe to you maybe three that I think are the most beneficial and probably the ones that they receive the highest, uh, interest.
This is like in February though, right?
Huh?
This is for February.
This would be for, actually for March, this doesn't get put until March.
Table it.
If you wanna do this, if you wanna do this like the next meeting, that's fine with me.
I mean, honestly, I think we already gave you direction to go in the order that you had them, didn't we?
No.
We didn't?
No.
I thought the rest of the order.
So we do have to decide then, if it's the next meeting, that's fine, but again, you know, some of these things are going to involve, you know, engineering.
It's a good impact on budget. You know?
Yeah. Yeah, and these, some of these might be, again, we don't know the, the costs, we don't know the engineering, we don't know if we can even get it, what type of grants are out there, et cetera, who we might piggyback with on this. So there are some, some issues that, that we have to decide on. And I think that when we do it sooner rather than later, I think we, we can potentially do bigger projects than some of what we've been submitting thus far, you know?
I would suggest this on the agenda, we talk about it, we make big money, we're here to do the business of the township, let's talk about it.
Okay.
We've remembered.
How about we put a limit on it?
Okay.
Let's put on a, put a fifteen minute limit on this discussion.
I think that's fair.
Nine twenty-four. I'll make mine easy, I thought number one and number two were the clear to me.
Okay.
I mean, they're.
So you were talking both about the Broadway, Isabella intersection, um, to have the left turn signals and all that set up similar to what we're doing for all the other intersections going down Isabella, either one.
Really adjusts the safety in our township and. So I don't have the same, close to.
Last meeting.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a.
Traffic flow.
Oh, it wasn't here.
It's a wonder where you're pulling that one out up there, Brian.
So be next of the two. Um, do you want me to explain it to you, Ben, or, or?
No, 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 I understand, I understand.
You know, so it's basically following along what we're doing on Isabella and, and the one that's being neglected is, is Broadway. So making sure that we have that Broadway, um, signal and try to get that all done now in one, um, one, one time. The other is the, to put in, um, speed zones and safety lights at the two schools, at Renaissance and at Mary Maguire. Um, there was a really high support for that. And then the third one, where there was a really, another high interest was for our inter-local pathway conductor that would go from area A, from Deer, Deerfield through to, to, through Denison. And the whole idea of that originally was to get some of the traffic, pedestrian traffic off of Crawford. Again, it's not, it's not a perfect solution to what our situation at Crawford. Um, you know, we may later on look at seeing about shoulders being widened over in Crawford, maybe reducing the speed there, those are some other options that had interest. But the two that you mentioned and that third one, um, the, the pathway connector, um, those are the three that had the, the most support. So i- is that something that we wanna give Mark direction to look into?
I agree with one hundred percent.
Yeah, number three, my hesitation was there and you said it well, it's not the perfect solution.
No, it isn't a perfect solution.
And we've had discussions here already, uh, that Crawford Road is a huge issue.
We've done two parts of that pathway.
Right.
You know, so this, this would be the final phase of that pathway and then it completes the entire thing so that students coming in from Deerfield, from the apartments there have direct access. Right now, that's a part that, that's not completed. But, but if we wanna go with the other two, I mean, whatever you decide, that's fine, but I think those are the ones that certainly had the highest, uh, interest when I spoke with the, with the tribe.
I got a question, is why are we talking such a limited project on Crawford and why aren't we talking about Crawford Road itself? I know it's gonna be, it's a, it's a collaborative which, you know, we, we should, we should start that discussion. But it's gonna be expensive. But isn't this the time where, I mean, Lincoln's expensive, right? Lincoln's gonna be a lot of money. And so why don't we change the conversation? Why are we just talking about widening shoulders and decreasing speed? Why aren't we talking about truly addressing Crawford Road? I think that would be, to me, if, if that conversation got started and we had, um, agreement from the parties involved, then see, the, the road commission doesn't function on this project until they're given directive, right? And we should give them directive, is, is that, you know, amongst this group and, and, and that collaborative group, is we should be looking at, okay, you know, let's start looking for grant money. Let's, you know, while Rogers still got, you know, in a position, uh, uh, to be able to do this, have Rogers start looking at, at what kind of monies are available. I mean, I'm guessing that project is gonna be a, you know, probably a one point six to two million dollar project by the time it's all done.
Oh, yeah.
Easements.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're gonna have to get.
And you don't have, you don't have a whole lot of wiggle room because of.
To the west you do, to the east you don't.
Right.
And so what would have to happen is is the, the road would have to go to the west, the west you've got, you've got room, the east you don't. But I think the conversation should start and if we're gonna talk about two percent money, let's, instead of throwing lipstick on a pig, let's, let's talk about the real true issue, which is Crawford flipping road, right? And, you know, I mean, that, that to me makes sense and, and, you know, it, it's long past due.
What were they talking originally, it was like, what was it, six hundred and fifty or eight hundred and fifty, what, what was it?
But that was just a pathway. It was eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but it was a pathway and, and it, but it, see, I think my conversations that I've had with, you know, I've, I've, Mayor and I have talked quite a bit and, you know, I've discussed with him, I said, you know, this is both boards need to start thinking about Crawford Road. And, you know, I think you've, you've got the Isabella County Road Commission, I'm sure you've got MDOT somehow involved in there. Um, and you've got CMU. But when has there ever been a discussion with all three of those parties?
We, we did start, we did start on that shortly after the accident that happened on the previous board. At that time, CMU didn't wanna have discussions about it. And the only real ones that we got buy-in from was the road commission. They were more than willing to, to work with us, to fi- to work on easements and find ways to get a, a safe pathway in there right away. But it, it fell short, I mean, the, the political will wasn't there. And I, I agree.
But that was a different president.
Exactly, and I agree, it's a great conversation to get going again. I, the reason I was supportive of one and two is if, those are things that tribe haven't, has interest is in and we do too, it's more likelihood of it happening, but I agree a hundred percent, this is something we should work on, um, because someone else is gonna get killed there.
You know, it's, it doesn't have to be an either or, you know, Mount Pleasant emits like multiple, um, two percent, uh, projects. Uh, I mean, six, seven projects that they end up getting funded. So, you know, we don't have to limit it, but, so we could, we could even do the three that we're suggesting, that Isabella plus the pathway and throw in.
But I think if we're gonna do that, that from, from what I understand, Norm, is that, is that i- if we throw it out there ourselves, it's a no-go. Because it's just us.
Right.
And so we use our opportunity in the inter, intergovernmental to have a little bit of a discussion while we're in that room.
Good point.
And, and start throwing that up. I've gotten to know President Davies, you know, pretty well and, um, he is, he is, uh, a vast improvement. This guy is like on top of things, they're very community minded. I think it's worth a shot to, to, um, you know, bring that up in discussion if there's, cause I, to be, I, to be frank with you, beyond maybe reading the story, I don't know how aware, you know, he really was about what had happened on, on that road. And like anything, you know, I mean, it's just a matter of time for something else bad to happen because it's a dangerous situation.
I agree, I agree with that, yes, it is.
So that'd be my suggestion is, is that, you know, I think all this stuff is wonderful, but it, it, it just, you know, we're throwing, because when we start talking that next phase of that pathway, in my mind, now also now we're talking about a crosswalk being involved, um, a lowering the speed limit, um, a lit pathway and a connector. So I think the next phase is gonna be inherently more expensive than what this first phase was. You know, I'm thinking the distance is probably the same, Mark would probably agree, is it's gonna be a lot more logistics involved.
Now, let, let me just help you a little bit maybe. What you're talking about, I think, it, what you started talking about was the spring two thousand twenty, two percent. And if that's where you wanna focus your discussion, I'd suggest that's where you focus it. And Crawford Road writ large is a discussion that the community needs to have. But it, I'm not sure why you're talking about it in the context of a spring twenty twenty.
I agree.
Grand. Cause it, it is not gonna ever happen in that amount of time. I mean, I doubt, you know.
Two or three years?
You couldn't even engineer it between now and then and get the bids out and get construction going or be in a position to, even if you had all the money and all the players at the table. Cause you're, you gotta apply by March. That's not to say that the board could not take a position separate from a two percent thing about driving Crawford Road writ large. And that's probably very appropriate, but to bundle it in with the two percent, I think you're just kinda spinning your wheels right now.
I agree, but I, I agree fully with your idea, Ben, but I also agree that this is a little longer term and will take a lot of, uh, bridge building with, um, other stakeholders here to make it happen. But I'm certainly willing to help be part of that.
Absolutely. So as far as giving direction, do we all agree on the three or just the two?
Can I ask what your sense was in your discussions?
Well, I.
As far as, did they give an indication of what we might?
The, the, the two, the first two.
Yeah.
Had the highest priority, that was both from council members, that was came from, uh, talking with the Renaissance principal there, I mean, there's a lot of interest in that because that's a, that's a safety issue. And, you know, the tribe is always looking for both, um, access and use for tribal members and utilizing those, those, uh, projects. And also safety, safety's a big issue. And when you go down, um, you know, Isabella now, I mean, at those hours in the morning and in the afternoon, I mean, I don't even see if people got out of the parking lot, let alone, you know? So it's, it's a rehazardous, so those two are high priority. I think the, um, the pathway, because we, we got money, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the other part of the pathway that went over to the, uh, baseball field uh, that the tribe contributed, um, and that was a two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar project and they contributed a hundred and fifty of that. We, our, our output was fourteen thousand, city paid some and then Mount Pleasant, uh, CMU paid some. So that, that might be a project that's worth considering. Again, we got into this whole thing about the, um, that pathway from Deerfield because of the accident and it was like, you know, it was like the, the best alternative we had other than doing Crawford Road. So my sense is that there would be priority, you know, and there'd be interest in, in, in perhaps, um, doing that as well, you know, finishing up the pathway there.
My, my concern with that third one, based on the work that I did back in the day with, and tribe was involved, CMU, city and the township, was there was no data that would show that that would actually resolve any of the issue.
Right, I know.
Um, in fact, there was reason to believe it wouldn't address the issue. And so I have reluctance with that one because of that reason. I mean, it.
Well, that one's already moving, uh, it's related to area A. And you can bifurcate them and, and consider them to be trying to solve two different solutions if you want.
Right.
Uh, but the tribe did contribute to, to the pathway. And CMU, uh, because their, I think, perspective has changed a little bit as the supervisor was indicating, they're already working on, uh, doing some engineering so we can understand how much it was gonna cost. And we're already working on trying to get it included in the Mid Michigan Pathway Group Plan. Cause that's a requirement to make it, to be able to apply for two percent money. So you could add another project if you want, but this one's already moving because it, it accomplishes a lot of the township goals. And you'll have an opportunity to vote whether or not you want to apply for two percent to help fund it in March and you'll be able to say yes or no to that. But that, that'll be in front of you, I'm almost certain. Cause one of the administration's recommendations will be two percent funding. And you'll be able to have an opportunity to say yes or no to that. But we're working on that project already anyways.
So I think that two, Isabella Road issue for the, um, by the schools are probably the best to go with. And trying to get that coordinated with the work that's going to be already going from, uh, down that whole corridor. You know, in terms of the intersection, so that makes the most sense.
So do we need a motion to direct staff to begin?
It's kinda the way we did it last time, I mean, did we sort of made a motion that these are the projects that we were going to consider and then, um.
But do we wanna go to that? But do we want to go to that point at this point in time? We got, I mean, there could be something else that could roll out.
Yeah, fifty seconds.
I mean, this was just all about, action item, this was just a discussion item. I mean, those seem to be two high priorities, right?
Right, right.
And, you know, we have the one on there with Meridian Road, but that would have to be collaborated with Deerfield, and so you'd have to have a conversation with Deerfield and see if that's what they wanted to do too.
Exactly.
But I mean, that would be a heck of a good project too, because that road's horrible.
That, you're a hundred percent right, and, and I think if Deerfield was involved in it along with Union Township, then I think that there might be more interest from the tribe to do it. Because at first, we were just going for that two percent from us and them, and they were saying, again, use and access, so.
Yeah, I think there's more out there. I, I like where this is going, at least we've, like, this is way ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
Like months ahead of the curve.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
We're at fifteen minutes.
All right.
All right.
Here we go. Thank God, right? Thank God, I put a, a time limit on that. Speaking of time limits, we've moved to item eleven, which is extended public comment, which is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. This is an opportunity for comments only, and questions, the board will not be answered at this time. Will, let's see, like, come up.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Graham, seven seven five, Meadowbrook Drive. Over the last few months, I've witnessed the trustees accept a planning committee decision based on the fact they didn't have time to do their due diligence. I've seen a majority of trustees take direction from the township manager, when my understanding was that the manager was to take direction from the trustees. I was made very uncomfortable at the last board meeting when y'all were trying to discuss an issue from a closed meeting. It was like you guys were like a group of little kids. It was very, it, it was not comfortable at all, and I didn't think it was very professional. But what topped the evening off, when the discussion about the township manager's salary was addressed. Earlier in that meeting, the manager stated he didn't want a pay increase, doesn't use all his paid vacation, which is four weeks, doesn't take time to request mileage for in-town, but will for out-of-town meetings. Then, before the discussion started regarding his pay, he again stated that he wasn't requesting a pay increase, but he would like one more week paid vacation and a three hundred and sixty dollar car allowance. Number one, his salary is already at a hundred and four thousand dollars. Number two, the township has vehicles that he could use sitting out in the parking lot. And number three, the additional week of vacation means to me that he evidently gets paid for vacation if it's used or not. So I feel as a union town president, a closer look at how this township is being run needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, when anyone likes, else like to come up? Seeing then, we close extended public comment, and we move to item twelve, which would be managers' comments.
Thank you. Just briefly, earlier this week, the holiday lights went up on Pickard installed. I'm guessing they're lit now. The, was mentioned earlier, the two percent distribution is next Thursday. The fact that we were, received an invitation to that indicates that at least one of the two applications we submitted has been approved, if not both of them, but at a minimum one, otherwise we wouldn't receive an invitation. And I forwarded that to the supervisor and trustee Worley. The, I think you can anticipate a closed session next meeting. Probably about time for me to give you an update on the collective bargaining negotiations that are going on. So I'm kinda thinking that will be next week. And that'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Um, I have a question for you. The trustee Hulk had brought up easements on Bluegrass probably, what, six, eight weeks ago? Whether there's been any advancement towards trying to gain easements on, on Bluegrass.
There, there is not. Still on the list, but there's not, we have not done an outreach to them.
Okay. That's all I've got as far as questions. Any questions for Mark at all? Okay. All right. Final board comments. Oh, golly, I started Mr. Lannan earlier, I might as well keep it going. Go ahead.
The meeting, you know, was a, a full slate of time, but I think it was a productive meeting. As Bennett mentioned, ahead of the curve.
I do have an item. We did have a budget meeting that we felt we didn't need today. But I want to preview, as we go into the public hearing, I do have one concern with the budget, but I didn't feel as large enough to warrant a separate meeting for. So I thought I'd raise the idea now so that you can all think about it, and if we need to make adjustments, we can. I, I have a difficulty looking at raising the water hookup rate and sewer hookup rate and the benefit fees without having feedback from our studies that we have budgeted for.
I agree.
That's all I got. Thanks.
I have nothing.
I'm good.
I agree with Brian. That's one of my concerns too.
That's your, that's your only comment, though?
Yep.
You sure?
I have nothing.
Oh, golly, at nine forty-five, nobody wants to hear me, so I'm, I'm good.
We've been here this long.
What's that?
We've been here.
Oh, I, I just, I had a resident contact me that, that lives on McGurk, and they're going to special assessment district over there. In fact, I've had two people contact me, one about three weeks ago, and one here just recently. They had mentioned a fifteen percent administrative fee and on the project. Do you know anything about that? Is there a fifteen percent administrative fee on these special assessments?
There is. We've, petitions being circulated, it has, I don't know if it's come back yet to the township, but it, it comprises several costs. One is the, an estimate of the cost by the road commission for the construction, an estimate for administrative expenses such as anticipated legal fees or other fees that are related to the special assessment. And then I believe there is a, part of that, a, I'll call it a, an administrative fee, but maybe outside of legal overhead, that kind of thing, which maybe is what you're referring to. I don't, I don't have the document in front of me. But it does, it does, there are several components to the amount that's part of the petition. And that was then used to generate some estimated amounts. Keep in mind that these are all estimates, estimated amounts at the parcel level, at the property level. And that petition's being circulated. When it comes back to us, we will vet it, and then it, I think the next step after that would be bringing it here to continue to see if the township and the citizens want to advance the issue that if fully advanced would culminate in the creation of a special assessment role. But my recollection is, is there's probably six points along the way where it will be before this body. So there's plenty of time to be addressing that formally.
Is, is that new, Mark, as far as the administrative fee?
It's, it's contained, everything that's in that amount is contained within the special assessment policy of the township and/or state statute. And they would all be typical reasonable amounts in any organization that I'm used to. It may be new for the township, I don't know, I'd have to do some research, but.
Because I'm just wondering if, in the past with subdivisions, I know we, we had a special assessment on our subdivision, we paved the road some years back, and I think it was only in terms of the cost of the actual work itself, you know, that in age, one of us either paid it outright or you got to put on your tax roll for a period of time.
Right, it, it probably was just the cost of the construction, but that was not the full cost of the project.
Yeah, I believe my road was the same way. My, in my neighborhood, it was a special assessment under the petition process, same deal.
Same, right?
Yeah, it was just the, the cost of the road commission.
This is the same process. What may be different is we would be, we would have included all the costs associated with the project, not just the construction cost.
And that'll be part of what's presented to us in those various stages anyways, right?
All right. There we go, that wasn't so bad. Four minutes.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Did you have another one?
What's that?
Did you have another one?
No, 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 that was, that was the one I'm hearing enough about that, I need to have some kind of clarity on it.
So, motion to adjourn?
Support.
Okay, all in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody.